Bill Clark, Ferrisburg.
Steve Flint, Waltham.
Sue Verkavsky, Verjones.
Okay, great. I recognize some people from committee work. So, thank you very much for being interested in these S-Back results or the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium results. I thought I'd start today by talking a little bit about what S-Back is and then share the results. And then, most importantly, talk a little bit about what are we doing about it as a district? What are we doing about the results? Because that's what really matters in terms of how students perform. I'm presenting only the K6 information because Stephanie is going to present the seven, eight, and eleven information to you later on this evening. I'm also only presenting to you one year's worth of data. We, as a district, took S-Back last year at the elementary level and at the middle and high school level. But we had some assessments, snafus, in the fact that it was the very first year. And so, I can't really make comparative data for that. However, next year, if I'm back presenting S-Back, I will certainly be able to start looking at some trends. So, I thought what I would do, first of all, is, and I apologize that some of you have to turn around to look at this. It's also information that you received in your packet, your board packet. We thought that the presentation might be good if anybody's going to watch this later. But I thought I'd start off with the literacy information. And just alert you to the fact that S-Back is actually given over a period of days. It's not a one-day assessment. It's actually given over a period of days. So, the data that you see comes from students sitting at a computer over multiple days at multiple times, taking a test. The test is very interesting, actually, because it self-adjusts. So, if the student is having a difficult time on a couple of problems in a row, it'll go a little easier. And then, if they're sailing through, it'll bump up a little bit more. So, it's self-adjusting that way. It's kind of unique. But these are the results. We have third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade, kids in kindergarten, first and second, don't take the S-Back. Starts in third grade, which is pretty interesting when you look at the data. So, as you can see, I thought it would be interesting to compare our district overall, all the third grades, all the fourth, fifth, and sixth grades, so all three schools, data compared to the state. And as you can see from this particular graph, we score higher. Ours is the blue. We score higher, significantly higher, in fourth and fifth grade than the state average. We're about on par at the sixth grade level, a little bit higher. And third grade is below the state average. So, that's notable. We're going to talk a little bit more about that. Go ahead, Martha, scrolling down. What we're going to talk about next, or take a look at next, is how students do, all of our students, our aggregate students, this is really important, compared to the historically disadvantaged students in the district who are free and reduced lunch students. Because typically, there is a wide gap in achievement between non-free and reduced and free and reduced, which is how the state disaggregates that data. So, all of our students, the aggregate score you see in blue, and our district's free and reduced lunch are in the orange. So, you can see in third grade, there's a big gap. And in fourth grade, fifth grade, it narrows a little bit. And sixth grade, still a significant gap. There's a wide range of achievement between students who are free and reduced lunch or come from that poverty, historically disadvantaged setting versus the aggregate. However, I also plopped up there the orange, the sort of yellowish-orange, which is the state's average for free and reduced lunch. So, you can see that, for example, in fifth grade, our fifth graders across the district who were free and reduced lunch actually scored significantly higher than the fifth grade across the state. We are about on par in sixth grade with the state, our free and reduced lunch kids, same with fourth grade. But you'll notice in third grade, the district students scored lower than the state average for free and reduced lunch. So, again, third grade is kind of an interesting little blip on the, yes? Go ahead.
How many, what numbers are we talking about? Because these are percentages, right?
Mm-hmm. So, I was under the impression we had a lot of free and reduced lunch kids in our district.
So, what's the N for free and reduced?
Well, like, how many numbers are we talking about?
That's a great question.
We're talking three kids or 300, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I can get that to you. I didn't include that. But historically, across the district, and I'm looking at Martha, approximately, what is our percentage of free and reduced lunch kids?
The, for Gen's Elementary School, it's been about 50. Ferrisburg's been 35 percent. Addison has been, it just went up at, it's 65 percent in Addison, I believe. And at the high school, it's about 37. It's low 30s.
So, that's great information. The N is definitely less, fewer kids than the aggregate. But one of the things that the state wants you to do is take a look, how are the kids who come from poverty doing compared to the general population? So, that's why we disaggregate it that way. Go ahead, Martha. Next. The next thing that's always interesting to look at is how do the females versus males compare in terms of literacy achievement in our district? So, this is in our district. And you'll see that pretty much across the board, across all grade levels, the girls performed higher in terms of meeting or exceeding the standard in literacy than the boys in our district, which is also very interesting because there has been some research out there about how you approach education based on gender. You might want to be thinking about that. So, it poses the question in my mind, is that something that would make an interesting discussion at the teacher level in terms of, is it worthwhile studying what the research says about boys learning in classroom versus girls learning in classroom? Because there is a significant difference there. And that's for literacy. All right, Martha, continue on. And feel free, if you have any questions, just jump right in. The next thing that I wanted to do was show you the math scores, our district as an aggregate versus the state. You'll see in third grade, we scored basically the same as the state average. In fourth grade, we did better. Fifth grade, we did better. And sixth grade, pretty much the same as the state average. All right? So, that's interesting. Go ahead and keep going, Martha. The next, I thought, would be good for us to take a look at, especially as we consider, you know, our initiatives and our priorities in the district, how S-Back literacy compares to the math. So, the literacy is the blue and the math scores are the orangish-red. So, this is the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standard by grade. You'll see that while third grade, literacy is an issue, you know? In fourth grade, literacy and math are approaching each other. But in fifth grade, the students are outperforming in fifth grade compared to math and significantly different in sixth grade. Go ahead, Martha. Also, in terms of the free and reduced lunch for math, we have, the general population is in blue. Our district's free and reduced lunch is in the dark orange. And then, the state average, yes?
Does the blue bar include the free and reduced lunch as well?
No, it's actually pulled out.
So, it is pulled out?
Yeah. Oh, wait a second. No, it is not pulled out. That is incorrect. It's all.
So, if you pulled it out, would actually be more of a difference.
It would be higher. Yep, it's all. So, as you can see, again, you see this big discrepancy between kids from historically disadvantaged environments versus the general population as an aggregate. But then, when you compare that to the state, you see our free and reduced lunch population is basically the same as the state average, the same in fifth grade. Fourth grade, our students do higher than the state average. And in third grade, it's flipped. We do a little bit less well than the students from free and reduced populations across the state. Okay, Vanna? Next, the math, female versus male comparison. I was really curious about this because you always hear, or you hear a lot, about students, girls especially, struggling with math as they get older. So, I thought this was a really interesting graph myself because I see that in third grade, girls outperformed boys in third grade. They were about the same in fourth grade. Fifth grade, just a little bit, the girls dipped down. But in sixth grade, the girls outperformed the boys again. Now, keep in mind, this is just one year's worth of data. It'll be interesting to look over time. Could just be the cohort group. But this is what we have there. Martha, do I have anything else up there? Nope, I don't. Okay. So, the most important thing is, what are we doing with this data? You know, what is it we're doing? So, we have three things that we're doing as a district. The first is that last year and this year, there's been a big push to develop local, rather than in the spring one time, local math and literacy assessments that we can keep tabs on our students as screeners, keep tabs on our students to make sure that we're catching kids earlier to see if they need any help. So, last year at K6, we developed literacy and math screeners as well as second look screeners if a child scores not well. On that first look screener, we have an individual assessment that we do with students so that we can confirm or disconfirm whether or not the student's struggling. So, that's number one, rather than just waiting until the spring and the S-Back assessment. We want to know how our students are doing using common standards across all schools. The second thing that we're doing this year is, since third grade, you saw, third grade was, seemed to be not scoring as high perhaps as the other grades for both math and literacy, and definitely for literacy. We're looking really closely at the Common Core foundational skills that are expect, reading skills that are expected in kindergarten, first, and second, because that they're really rigorous, which could account for perhaps the lower scores for our third graders. So, we're looking with teachers. We've invited the Stern Center to come in and work with our kindergarten, first grade, and second grade teachers around those Common Core foundational reading skills. We are also, in terms of math, having conversations throughout the district, but definitely in K6, around how, what are those Common Core state standards? What do they mean? If you unpack them a little bit, what are they really looking for? And how well do our programs align with that? And the teachers have been working with, one of our math teachers from Addison, Tara Trudeau, to have those conversations and share ideas around, you know, what do we feel comfortable teaching and where are we kind of struggling? What concepts are we struggling with? So that we can be better teachers in terms of teaching these concepts to our students. So, in a nutshell, that's kind of what the district focus has been. One last thing is, as an entire district, based on Joanne's direction, we are working really hard as a district to think about, how can we look at all this information that we have about our students and use that not only in our classroom, but to talk about, how are we doing as a school? How are we doing across schools? And what do we need to be considering? So that people aren't just looking at their own grade, their own classroom, their own students, but thinking a little bit broader in terms of what are we doing as a system to help our kids? So, that's kind of the focus this year. Yes?
I've been just looking at these, the downward slope from fifth to sixth grade in literacy and math. Are you looking at that, of why there would be that trend? And is it going downward in seventh and eighth grade?
So, that's a, you bring up a really great question, which is, how do we look at trends? What's happening with regards to trends? And in this particular case, there, we can't, while we notice that there's a difference in score.
Well, it's obvious.
Yes. The real question is, since it's just one-year snapshot and it's just, could it just be the class? Like, you wonder to yourself, well, if sixth, could sixth grade have actually been lower last year and come up? But we don't know that because we only have one year. So, we can't, we can't do trend analysis because we don't, we only have one year's worth of data. But that's something that will be on our radar to say, huh, over time, is this something that we're seeing our kids kind of going down over time? So, once we have what we call longitudinal data, you know, over time data, we'll be able to look at those trends.
And we will also have, we will also be looking at our local screeners because we chose those assessments to align with the, as much as we possibly can, the Common Core. And we will have at least a couple of different times this year that the same assessment will be given before the next S-Back.
So, local data, you'll have multiple assessment points so you can look and see, is there a trend? And we're having those conversations back at the ranch in all the schools, like, are there any trends? Is there any anomaly with this data? But it's really training all the teachers to, how can you actually have those conversations and look together at that data? Yes?
So, I think you might even be able to infer my opinion about S-Back if you read between the lines in some of this.
From the body language? I'm starting to get it. Yes.
So, I get a little worried, and I'm not, it's not a worry for you, it's just systemically, education-wise. I get a little worried when we start making instructional, programmatic decisions based on a standardized test. But that's a very artificial experience for our kids. This is in front of a computer in isolation with headphones, not the type of learning that I value for my own kids. Is there, are there assessments in place right now? Or will there be that you can actually put some alignments? You can look at these, you know, the formative assessments, summative assessments in the school next to that and say, all right, let's look at this whole package here. How are we moving forward?
That's a great question. Yes, the answer is yes. So, for example, one of the assessments that we're doing this year is the FAST assessment for math and for literacy. And we're looking at the results from that and seeing, are kids scoring approximately the same in the spring on that assessment as they do on the S-Back? Is there parity there? And it's also really important, when you think about the different layers of assessment, there's the state assessment, which is this one, which the state requires all kids in the state to take. And then, there's district assessments, which are designed to help us identify needs in program and also catch any kids. You want to make sure you're keeping tabs on how kids are doing so nobody's falling through the cracks. I was talking to somebody from the high school yesterday and they said, the person said, because we were working on a writing assessment, like a writing screener, how can we catch kids and make sure that nobody's falling through the cracks in terms of their writing skills? And he said, I'm so happy that you're doing this because I had two students who were identified as dysgraphic when they got into 12th grade. And we can't wait until 12th grade to catch those kids. So, that's one of the purposes of districts. But then, in the classroom level, teachers are also thinking, what does the Common Core expect? And then, what are the other types of formative, dipsticky assessments come to do to also make sure kids are growing and so that they're growing in the areas of Common Core? Yep. So, it's kind of like a three-layer cake. And the icing is not the S-Back.
And that's one of the big challenges, is the assessments that we tend to use in schools, like the Fountains and Penau. It tends to be more intensive at the primary and then, upper grades, it tends to be only after a screener. So, you can't really look at, you can't look at the alignment with S-Back. So, something like that. And the screener is a screener. It's not really the same as the, so, that's the big, I guess that's what your job is, isn't it? To figure that out?
Exactly. And the most important thing is, we want whatever we're doing with kids to, at the district level, to give us information about our program and to make sure we're catching kids, you know, nobody's falling through the cracks. And to be able to have conversation about what does this data tell us we need to be changing and/or doing in our schools. Okay?
Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
That's great. That was really helpful. Okay, this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 6:30. And we're going to start with a couple of agenda changes. One of them, Glory, where should we put this? We have, we have to change a credit card signer.
Action item.
Action items. So, we're going to add that to action items. I don't think we're going to have time for this tonight, but I'd like to at least leave the opportunity, last time we met, we talked about potentially having regular discussions about superintendent evaluations at each meetings, at each meetings, that we didn't feel like we were getting stuck at the end. So, if there is time, which I don't think there will be, but I'd like to at least put that on the agenda, that we may discuss the superintendent's evaluation in an executive session.
I would like to add to the agenda under action items, maybe C, to establish a superintendent's evaluation committee.
Okay. Um, I'm just trying to figure if that's something that we can do without a warning.
Well, if we're going to establish committee, you've got to have an action.
No, no.
You can definitely do an action item without a warning.
I think we can.
It's not a good habit to be into, but I would ask for that to be on the agenda.
Yeah, that particular action item, I think, would be okay. So, let's discuss that. Okay, great. Hearing no further adjustments to the agenda, let's move on to public comment. Hearing no public comment, we will move on to reports to the board, starting with the superintendent's report. By the way, thank you all for being here. I didn't mean to just glaze over you quickly, but I'm glad you're here.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Joanne did send her report in the packet. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on.
I do have one question. Joanne, the big drop in student enrollment.
I'm sorry?
There's a big drop in our student enrollment.
Yes, Michelle.
Do you foresee this as a continuing trend?
I do see this as a continuing trend. And I've asked the principals to put enrollment in their individual reports as well. When we were meeting as an Act 46 Study Committee, we projected enrollment out through 2020, I believe. In the last three years, we've lost 100 students. I believe we have potential to lose another 100 students in the next five years.
That's what I was afraid of.
So, we do need to have this discussion when we're developing our budgets and be thinking about forecasting.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other questions?
We don't have pre-K for 2017, '16 and '17.
Not in, I didn't include pre-K on your charts.
But we do have it.
Oh, we absolutely have it, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks, Joanne. Moving on to the business manager's report, Tanya did include, and I want to separate this into two sections. We've certainly got Bill here to talk to us about the audit progress. But before we get to that, are there any questions about the financials that Tanya included with the packet? Hopefully, you've had a chance to look those over. Or anything you want to highlight, Tanya?
No, everything is going well right now.
Is there, has there been a change in the member assessments or something? Why is there such a large difference between what was budgeted and the actuals for the member assessments for special ed and preschool and central office?
What, I'm not understanding the question.
What was budgeted versus the actual?
And the revenue piece?
Yes.
Oh, we haven't collected all of the revenue yet.
Oh, okay. So, just not encumbered.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that will zero out.
We encumber the expenses, but not the revenues.
Yes. Okay, right. And one other, the psychology services, is that from somewhere else or?
It was budgeted there. It's being paid out of the wrong lines right now, so it has to be moved back in.
Okay.
It's in there, it's just not in the right section.
It's just not on that line. Okay, thank you.
And I noticed that when I was doing this report.
Good catch. Yeah, good catch, too. Any other questions? All right. Well, it's early in the year yet, so we'll see. Thanks, Tanya. Before we move on to the report from our auditor, I wanted to just quickly, I guess, open it up by saying that I did have a chance to meet with Bill and James earlier, or end of last week, whenever. It was last week sometime, Wednesday, thank you. The time just flies right by. And, you know, they told me about a couple of the things that Bill is going to talk about tonight, but I wanted to start with just a really quick, you know, we've, we've come through so much as a district in the last few years. And just as we were starting to come out of some of our difficulties with the former administration, we hired an auditing firm. I was looking back at my notes because I personally checked the references of this auditing firm and I, you know, everything checked out like they would be a really good match for us. I'm not here to slam that auditing firm. We've taken action with the Office of Professional Regulation indicating, you know, that we had chosen not to continue our contract with them, so that's all a separate topic. But the fact is, we really thought that we were on target to get a really good audit because what you want out of an audit is to find things that you can fix. It's always a nice pat on the back to get an audit where they say everything is perfect. But what you really want are opportunities to improve and to continue to evolve your programs. We could have stuck with the previous auditor and not had that opportunity. It would have given us the advantage to brag to everybody that we had no findings. But there are things we can improve. And so, now, we're moving in a direction where we have an auditing firm that I think we all feel is a really great match for our district. And I'm confident that we are going to get a thorough audit that will highlight areas where we can improve. And so, while it may be painful at times to hear things that we need to do better, that's the only way we're going to do better. And so, I just wanted to start the conversation that way. And then, Tanya, did you want to introduce Bill or do you want to?
Sure.
Thank you.
This is Bill Hall. He is from RHR Smith and out of Maine. In my previous district that I worked for, he was my, he was our auditing firm. And he is very thorough and he teaches me also when we're there, working together. So, Bill, go ahead.
So, it's a pleasure to meet you all. Can't say I'm an eloquent speaker, so if you can hear me if I start going too fast, lower down. I'm going to give you my process or our process that we normally use when we're doing audits. Usually, May or June before your year end, we'll come down and spend two or three days tying out your budget, reading your minutes, doing a review of what your current accounts look like, you know? Usually, I use it also as a ballpark of how long it's going to take me to do a complete audit. Sometimes with new clients, it's a little bit difficult. You know, coming in, I think I came in in June this year. I did have a sit-down with Joanne and Tanya, discuss some issues I already saw. A lot of it was dealing with a lot of beginning balances. I couldn't tie out between your other auditor and what your current financial software says. And then, I usually come down for about a week, which was last week, perform the full audit. I would say we are probably about 85 percent complete with the FY '16 audit. Areas that we haven't completely finished yet, your single audit hasn't been completed yet. That's, you know, that's where we test all your federal funds, like Title I, Local and Tenement, which is IDAB. And also, I have not quite finished the Supervisory Union. I've been having a lot of issues tying out your FY '15 audit balances to ADS or coming up with figures that make any sense. You know, so, Tanya has forwarded me some information. Hopefully, that will help me tie out that information. Ron Smith, who's the principal owner of the company, I believe, is coming next week or the week after to finish up your single audit. And then, that should be a day or two. And then, the rest of the stuff, I should be able to finish without actually being present at the office. If I need anything, I can always call. Something we are actually doing this year for the, that we've never done, is we're going paperless. Everything's being scanned into us, so if I'm on the road or whatever, I can always look at stuff. It makes it actually quite easy. After that process, I usually forward all the stuff to my office and they'll prepare the financial statements, probably usually a month, overlay between when the field work is done until you actually see a draft. We always send our audit report out in draft to either the superintendent or the business manager so they can review it, usually at the same time, not always. We also send management letters out, and those are always in draft also. It gives you guys a chance to, you know, include in there a spot that you guys can make comments to what we put in there. Then, usually, it's just finalizing the drafts and the management letters and then, usually coming before you guys and, you know, asking if you guys have any questions about the audit report or anything like that.
That will be scheduled for Jan, I just, sorry, Bill. That will be scheduled for the January board meetings.
Yeah, usually January, usually February in Vermont. Because usually, Vermonters are not usually very eager to get their financial statements. And there's no actually state requirement yet in the state. Usually, the only requirement we go by is, I think, March 31st is when the federal government requires that they get the C-Fan. So, there's no state requirement, only federal requirement. So, for current concerns or things that I've seen so far in your district that you will probably see on your management letter, you know, I call them ticky-tack stuff, but things like, you know, your filing system for your AP is not, you know, 100% top-notch, you know? You go in there, you look to find a file for, you know, local hardware store, ACE. You'll see, you'll see the file, but then you'll also find maybe our ACE hardware invoice under A. So you'll have it in the ACE hardware, then you'll have a file or invoice or a payment that's misfiled, something like that. Something else we saw on your AP file is some things that should have been filed in 2016, was filed in 2017, so it was misfiled. Some payroll issues, your I9s were like all over the place, your W4s too. I know you guys have done some moving around in there, and files have been kind of hosh poshed around the office. So, you know, again, I call those ticky tack things, you'll see them on your management letters. Things easily that can be fixed and remedied. Things that maybe take more time, you know, would be like these student activity accounts that Bill mentioned earlier. I'm a stickler for student activity accounts, and the reason for that is, is usually the individuals that are managing these accounts are not financial people, okay? They're educators or, you know, they're admin assistants, they don't have a financial background. So a lot of times, I'll go through every single transaction for the whole year in each one of these accounts. And, you know, the stuff sometimes I've seen here, are they paying taxes? Or their approval process isn't quite right, you know? You should, you should have someone, you know, a teacher who's getting ready to purchase something or to go on a field trip, should fill out a request, and then it should be signed by the principal, the secretary. And then the goods should be ordered, or the field trip should be scheduled. And then the invoice comes in and gets matched up to that paper. That invoice gets approved by the teacher or, you know, whoever ordered the product, and then it gets paid. And a lot of times, I wasn't seeing that kind of process in your schools. Another thing I saw with the student activity accounts is that a student activity account, and sometimes this gets under, you know, it doesn't go quite right. A student activity account is for the students. It's for, I can't even say it's for donations, because technically, all donations are supposed to go before the school board. But they're usually fundraisers or money that's brought in for a specific purpose. And that purpose is a field trip, or to buy an instrument, or buy something like that. What I like to get my schools out of is when I hear the words principal fund or slush fund. These accounts should not be used for circumventing the purchase order process. They shouldn't be used for any other purpose other than a specific purpose. And that's all that they should be used for. When you, if you have $10,000 in your bank account, you should have a subaccount ledger that says drama, class of 2004, whatever it is, and that should be made up of $10,000. When I see a student activity account that has $10,000 and no subaccount ledger, and it's just all just used for whatever it wants, it's a problem. Because again, the highest problem I have in schools is always a student activity account, okay? And that's, and, you know, Bill was mentioning earlier, and he's absolutely correct. And I've only, I only have one or two schools that's ever done this, because, you know, it's hard for schools if the student activity count is managed by the business manager on their software. It's hard for the schools to be able to get those checks on a timely basis. So what I tell them is, is, you know, that's a last means of measure, because, you know, for the principals and the secretaries to be able to have those funds ready, available, so in case a teacher needs to have something processed in a day or two, the chance of that happening when it's going through the business account is going to be slim to none. But what we need to get through to the individuals is, is look, if you want these accounts, you need to make sure that you're following the procedures that the business office is following, or when you're spending your general fund money, you're following that same kind of procedure. You know, other than that, you know, the biggest issue I've had in this, or concern I've had so far is, you know, and again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to throw your other auditor in the bus, I don't know who they are, but unfortunately, the quality of the work that I saw, and I can say that because, and I'll just give you one for instance, not exactly sure what school it was, but you had a scholarship on your books, and the scholarship was for 20 grand. Well, there was an entry that was posted in FY '15, which was supposed to close out that cash account, but what happened was, is instead of that cash account closing out, which would have been a credit to the cash, because your cash is a debit account, because it's an asset. So it should have been a credit to that cash, instead, it got posted to revenue. So that scholarship was overstated by $20,000 on your FY '15 financial statements, and it was also still showing cash when it was closed out. And that was just one, one, for instance, that I saw, and I can remember off the top of my head, of some of the things that I've seen with your previous auditor. That's caused a lot of problems for me and our firm, tying out balances or, you know, tying out accounts, you know. I'm very, I try, like Tanya said, I try to be very thorough. And you're a first-year audit, and you're a little trouble, which, you know, me and James were quite a few hours last week, you know, trying to get a lot of the information done so that we wouldn't have to come back here and bother the individuals, you know. Poor Martha on Wednesday and Thursday was sweat pouring off her a little bit because I had her running around the office gathering me stuff, so I could focus on, on the stuff that I wanted to focus on and have her kind of go give me the information that I needed for it. She was a great help, and without her, we probably wouldn't have got as far as we did, so.
That's great, Bill.
So that's it. Any questions you have? I probably just ended it with you.
No, this is perfect, and just remember, two things, ask questions if you have them. This is not our final report, this is just a heads-up, and we have exactly 14 minutes left.
How much money is in the student accounts in total?
That is a tough question for me to answer off the top of my head. I believe total, I would probably go in excess of maybe 70,000 or 80,000.
With all the schools?
All of them together, yes. Maybe more than that. I mean, what I can do is, after this is done, I'll fire my computer, I can give you a spot-on number.
And how many accounts are there?
Two, three, four, I believe there's four.
Four in total?
Four, four or five.
Okay, manageable.
One for each school.
One for each school, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, again, okay, so there's something else that I do, and that is, I send blanket confirm's to all your banks in this area with just the EIN number of every school. I am going to get some bank stuff back that are going to have accounts on there that I have no idea what they are. I almost guarantee it.
And there may be some that you don't even have any idea.
I wouldn't doubt it, it happens every time I do a first-year audit, you know. You guys were talking earlier about PTOs and booster clubs, guarantee it's going to happen.
Yep.
And then you made a comment about donations are supposed to go before the school board?
The only authority that has the authority in a school district to accept a donation is the school board, absolutely correct.
So when I write a check out for my kid's field trip to VUHS.
Not a donation, though.
It's not a donation.
Not a donation. A donation is-
Because it goes to a specific purpose?
Absolutely correct.
It's more like a grant in some ways.
Yeah, it's just you paying for your child to do something, that's all that is. A donation is, if I wanted to give money to Vergennes High School, $200 to use however they want, that's a donation.
And the AP filing system, we can get that fixed, this coming here?
Yeah, I mean, you've got a few more ticky tack problems than what I mentioned, and those are easy, you know, easy to fix. To be honest, almost every school has those kind of problems, you know, I9, the W4s, or file, I find a file that's misfiled or something like that, you know. It's just, all it does is just irk me a little bit, you know, so I write you up for it.
Thank you, thank you for that.
No, we appreciate that, you're thorough.
And then, do we have to restate our audits?
You know, so far, probably no, but the union might be a possible yes. I don't think I have to restate any of the other ones. I can't recall off the top of my head, if I, if it's a low amount of money, I can usually flow it through a revenue and expense account, and I'm not going to restate, because restating is sometimes a pain. But the union, you know, unfortunately, I don't have a number, but I know for like ballpark that your special revenues and your supervisory union are off $50,000.
You're talking about VUHS? When you say union.
Union, oh, sorry.
Oh, the supervisory union, thank you.
Sorry, I forget you guys have that.
So that means, though, then, all the other audits are off, is, doesn't it? Because the supervisory union has no surplus.
No, because remember, the federal funds and the grants just flow through the union, they don't flow down, you don't subgrade your money out, which is, which is good.
It's just the special funds that you have.
Yeah, just special funds, just titles, IDAB, any local grant, stuff like that.
Okay.
The Roland Fund, I think, was in there.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, this is, this is going to be great.
And I also wanted to say, just, you said that people in Vermont don't want their financial statements till March. That is not true of this district, of these districts. We want it on December 31st. We've had a, it's, we have a history, so just so you know, I want you to make sure.
I think that's what we're shooting, we have a date we're shooting for.
Okay.
You know, we'll try to make it. Again, like I said, I've got a lot of work still to do on the supervisory union. All the other schools, I'm sure, are pretty close, they're done, if not 100% done already. You know, Tanya doesn't have adjustments yet, which is another whole issue.
They never send them adjustments.
You know, your adjustments are going to be substantial, because that doesn't look like you had any adjustments done in '15. And that's why I had some issues tying out your beginning balances, because it didn't look like the prior auditor gave you any adjustments, which is a problem.
Okay.
So, but again, I think for most of the, most of the schools, we've done pretty well. You know, Tanya and I have sat down and gone through accounts, so, you know, we're trying, we're trying our best to make sure we can try to meet that deadline.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. We have very little time to get through what we have left. I do have a hand that went up from an audience member. Are there any objections to me taking one quick question from an audience member? Go ahead, sir.
I'm on the high school's school board.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I knew I'd seen you before, but I couldn't remember. I apologize.
I will lighten the energy. My question has to do with the last statement, and were you able to tie out the ending balances for the prior year without any adjustments for Tanya to enter? And if you are, how did you do that?
No.
So you are.
Not even close.
Okay.
Then there's some adjusting entries.
Well, my question is, we know that, and I know he knows that now, but if there were no adjustments to last year's ending balances, his opening statement was almost, "I don't know if we can tie to last year's ending balances." That could be potentially, he's given us some numbers, that could be potentially huge.
Absolutely.
And it goes back to your question of restating. He said, "No, hopefully." I love, I can see the crossfingers from back here. But that potential of no adjustments for Tanya leads a real hole for him to swim through. And I'm sure he's already swum through it.
And he's thinking about that already. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, the questions you just asked, they're not easy, the answer. I guess, I guess one comment I would put on top of that is, I'm not sure, actually, I'm not even going to say I'm not sure. I do not believe your FY '15 audits are 100% correct. That's all I can tell you. Because I already mentioned the $20,000 issue.
Oh, my God.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to ask that we move on. You certainly individually could email, well, I don't want to offer this without you. You know, if you have any questions directly for Bill, let me know. I'm happy to consolidate those and send them, and then ask Bill to respond to you individually so that we're not-
You know, and sometimes it's easier just to call me.
Even that, I just want to make sure that we're not-
The problem with email is, is that it could get drawn out, and then you look at it going, "What is he talking about?"
Yeah, a phone call. I just want to make sure that we're not circumventing the public meeting laws by having, you know, three of us call you at the same time. All right, thank you, Bill, we really appreciate it. You may race home.
Will you be letting us know if you decide we should be restating?
You'll see it in your audit report, and it'll be in your notes, we have to disclose it if we are restating, and the purpose, why.
Okay. Thanks again, Bill, have a safe trip home.
You do.
I'm going to move quickly on to the minutes for August 17th. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second. Okay, any discussion or corrections on the minutes?
I have a correction that I was, under update on audit, it says HR Smith, it should be RHR.
RHR, yeah.
There's just a single letter.
Any other changes? Hearing none, all in favor of the amended minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Bill's and Director's orders. As we pass that out, I was there last Wednesday and did a review, and everything looks fine. I didn't see anything to report.
Total is 973,670 and 35 cents.
Did I say it's so moved?
Sure, that's fine, as long as Glory has the amount, and as long as all of you heard it. We have a motion to approve those bills and Director's orders. Is there a second? Thank you, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the bills will be paid. Superintendent's goals is next.
Nope, we added superintendent's evaluation committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's where we wanted to put that, okay.
Credit card signers, credit card signers.
Thank you, so we have a few. Let's start with the credit card.
Yes.
My understanding is that we're switching from Jill Strube to Tara Brooks.
The director of the 21(c) program has resigned, and we have a new director, so we're requesting access for signature for the credit card.
So we're looking for a motion to change the signature on that credit card to Tara Brooks.
Correct.
Make that motion.
Thank you. In a second, any discussion?
Obviously, her, Jill's is done, she couldn't sign anything at this point.
That's correct.
Good point. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If I'm going too fast, just let me know, feel free to stop me. We also would like to discuss establishing a superintendent evaluation committee. Can we have a motion on the floor for that with maybe stating the purpose and any potential limits of that?
I would like to move that a superintendent's evaluation committee be established, the charge of which would be to work with the school, the Addison Northwest School District's board members, because they would also like to have some members on this board, on this committee, to create an evaluations process for Joanne and have it done by April 1st of next year.
Okay, yep, so we'd be collaborating across districts and with the purpose of not evaluating our current superintendent, but in establishing a process for the school district.
An evaluation system to use, so that the, right? Yes, you would use it, and eventually, the SD would use it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Did you get all that, Glory? Thank you.
And the district, the supervisory district is good with that, too?
Oh, yeah, that's what they suggested that we do.
Perfect, I like that. Any discussion, questions?
And the SD, oh, three members?
From this board?
Yeah, or two? Is there any volunteers? I'd really like to establish it now, since we have to do it before February, and we are not meeting again until December.
This will include, okay, so let's, yeah, all right, we don't, we normally would run this probably through each school district, but let's, are there any volunteers? I wouldn't mind volunteering from Ferrisburg.
Yeah.
I'll volunteer from Addison.
Awesome.
Okay, so we have our-
I can do Vergennes.
Good. We've got our four members. Okay. Any further discussion?
So let me just clarify, I'm sorry, Steve, Bill, Cheryl.
No, no, Michelle.
Oh, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Michelle.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the subcommittee has been established.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that we defer our discussion of superintendent goals and defer the closed session on the superintendent's evaluation until a future meeting. Is that all right? Okay, and is there, and now we have an article on here to go into a closed session to get an update on negotiations. Hold on, can we do that in a few minutes?
I don't see anyone, oh, yes, we have a negotiating council member here. That's really up to you. To this point, you want to just give people an update?
Are there things with-
There's not a ton to update, I mean-
Did you just meet once?
We had a meeting scheduled for the 13th, which the union representatives were not able to come to.
Oh, okay.
So we are scheduled to meet on the 25th.
25th, okay.
Let me ask this question quickly. Is there any information that you think we should know that would be subject to an executive session? Are there any questions the members would like to ask that would, you know, the premature disclosure of which could put us at a disadvantage?
I don't feel a compelling need to share anything, but if there's questions.
It sounds like there hasn't been much to discuss yet.
No, not really.
Okay. Hearing no motion on that, we will pass, and noting that we have no further items on our agenda, we will, last chance.
I just-
Yes.
Bill gave me the numbers for the student activities, and the total cash balance right now for the district is $168,303.
Okay, so we've got some work on that. Thanks for the update. Thank you all for helping us to race through, so that we are now adjourned at 7 o'clock.
Well done.